Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session. It is Monday, June 17th, 2024, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Reed.
Here.
Counselor Hussman.
Here.
Counselor Kohler.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counselor President Starr.
Here.
Counselor Drian.
Here.
Counselor Cross.
Here.
Thank you very much. If you are able, I ask you to stand and all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for everyone here and everybody watching, you may see something different on the screen above. Okay, the camera is that far down. There we go. Thank you very much. This building was opened in 2009, and now we have the sign that says, "This is the City of Kaiser." Thank you very much, Mr. Brown, for helping get this done. And Kaiser Public Arts. So it was a long time coming. Check that box. It's done. All right. It turned out great. Really appreciate all the thought that went into that. Let's go now to special orders of business, and it is time for a proclamation for Juneteenth. And to lead us off is Thais Rodick from the... Wow. Thank... Community Diversity Engagement Committee. I went to the acronym in my head, and I know that's not okay. So the Community Diversity Engagement Committee, thank you for being here, and then I will read the proclamation.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Clark. My name is Thais Rodick. I'm the Chair of the Community Diversity Engagement Committee, and we're here to talk about Juneteenth. So what is Juneteenth? On January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln declared that all enslaved people in rebellious states were to be set free. This is known as the Emancipation Proclamation. Despite the proclamation, for two years slavery was still rampant in the state of Texas. In the spring of 1865, General Gordon Granger and federal troops arrived at Galveston, Texas, and announced General Order Number Three. The issuing of this order and the arrival of federal troops in Galveston effectively ended the Civil War and emancipated those confined to a life of slavery. Specifically, Granger made the following declaration in General Order Number Three. "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between former masters and the slaves, and a connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor." The following year, freedmen in Texas organized and celebrated Jubilee Day on June 19th to celebrate their freedom. On June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, which officially made Juneteenth a federal holiday. This holiday is the first holiday to be approved since President Ronald Reagan signed a 1983 bill that approved Martin Luther King Day Jr. as a federal holiday.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming and sharing with us the history of this important celebration and commemoration. The proclamation for Juneteenth reads as follows. Whereas June 19th, also known as Juneteenth, Emancipation Day, Jubilee Day, and Freedom Day is the oldest African-American holiday observance in the United States, and whereas Juneteenth or June 19th, 1865 commemorates an important step toward the abolition of slavery and is the date on which Union General Gordon Granger rode into Galveston, Texas, and issued General Order Number Three, requiring the immediate freedom of more than 250,000 enslaved African Americans in Texas. And whereas Juneteenth is recognized by the United States government, the state of Oregon, and the city of Kaiser, and is commemorated on the 19th day of June each year as a tribute to those African Americans who fought so long for freedom and worked hard to make the goal of equality a reality. And whereas the Declaration of Emancipation was a new start, not the end, of the fight for equal rights for all African Americans, all of whom have the right to live in peace and with no fear of violence, harassment, or injustice. And whereas Juneteenth inspires ongoing vigilance against slavery in all its forms. And whereas the city of Kaiser is committed to justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion for all people, providing services to all with dignity and respect. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, together with the Kaiser City Council assembled in regular session, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth, and urge all the people of Kaiser to remember and learn from the lessons of the past and present so we can continue to strive for a just and equitable future. I'd like to make this presentation to you, Thais, on behalf of the community of Kaiser. Again, thank you so much, Thais, for that presentation and for the work of the Community Diversity Engagement Committee in our community. We'll now go to committee reports, and leading off with Parks is Lisa Sajeka.
Good evening. So nice to see you. I'm Lisa Sajeka. I'm the Vice Chair of the Parks Board, and I'm just going to jump right into it. We had our Parks meeting on Tuesday. It was a nice time. We had a decent-sized crowd. We had Peggy from the Peggy and Jerry Moore Gardens come talk about using the funds that they got in their matching grant and how everything was completed, and thanking us again and letting us know about their process. Then we had a report from the Salem Cricket Club. They are looking for a pitch, and they are wondering if they can find one in Kaiser. I personally think it would be a good time to have a different sport out in the public eye. I think that it's an interesting thing to learn about, but it's finding the right place. And then we had the family of Ryan J. Hill and the Woody... What's the name on that? Woody Williams Foundation. They want to put a Gold Star Family Memorial Monument in Ryan J. Hill Park. And the Ryan J. Hill family is down with it. They fundraise for everything they put in. I believe that they said that the only thing that we would be on the hook for is the little bit of electricity for the lights that light up the monument at night. They put it kind of towards the back so you'd be able to see it. And it would be the first Gold Star Family Memorial Monument in Oregon. So most states have them. We do not. So I think it would be another way where Kaiser steps forward and sets the example. The rest of the meeting went really quickly. I mean, it was an hour and a half meeting, which is kind of unusual for Parks Board these days, but we heard reports about the parks. Unfortunately, since the Parks meeting, there was a graffiti hit on Wallace House Park. The fences were covered, the play structures, most all of the signs. Thank goodness. Parks put a Plexiglas, a piece of Plexiglas, on front of the hand-painted signs at that park and a few others because it was completely tagged, and this afternoon, you couldn't even tell that it was hit. You know, it wiped off. And again, I want... I have nothing but good things to say about the Public Works Department in general, especially all the people who get on top of the graffiti problem. I mean, it's so wonderful to know that you can walk into a park, see that it's all of this paint, and then within a few hours have it as if it's not even happened. So I know that it's a big draw, and just thank you, Bill. Thank you for everybody in your department. And then the last thing I want to talk is about my favorite holiday is coming up. It's tomorrow. It's Public Works Day. Public Works Day is at Kaiser Rapids Park. They... You know, I was really disappointed. I asked them if they sold their hats, if they had like a gift shop, and I was told no. Because I might do something wrong and besmirch Public Works if I was seen doing something bad wearing a Public Works hat. But go down to the Kaiser Rapids Park. It's from 10 to 2:00. There'll be Public Works swag. There'll be all your favorite people. Some people who don't... You don't even know that they're your favorite people, but they are. So it's a great time. All right. Any questions?
First of all, thank you for rapidly reporting the graffiti down at Wallace House Park. My daughter-in-law came over yesterday for Father's Day and said, "Yeah, but there were..." I want to let you know, but there was this lady out there, and she described you to a T, including the dogs. And I said, "We're good. It's been reported." And I want to... I believe we all want to thank Bill Lawyer, all of your team members, who very rapidly respond and remove that horrible graffiti and that mess that people leave over there. It's not welcome in this community, and you make it really clear that we mean it, that that is not welcome here. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor. Now we'll share that with my staff because they're the ones out there getting rid of it almost every day.
And this is one of the parks, if I remember correctly, that will be getting cameras. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. That will be helpful for the future, but right now, just getting right on top of it. So we really appreciate that. So the presentation for the Gold Star Family Memorial, what you said was that the cost for the city would be the electrical. Is that correct? And the rest of it has been fundraised?
Just the... They will... They... The packet has all of what they do. But they fundraise and have the cost of the entire monument. What you pay for the electricity the electrical uses.
So with concurrence of council to have Mr. Brown and staff work on this to bring us to a council meeting as soon as they can get that report ready on this proposal. Is that good with council? All right. I'm getting concurrence from council to have staff work on this as a future council agenda item.
It was unanimous at the Parks Board. It was, yeah, a very nice presentation.
The graphics are stunning.
Yes.
Absolutely stunningly beautiful. Counselor President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Sajeka, am I understanding it correctly that the money's already been raised, or they're currently fundraising?
I believe that they are currently fundraising. They needed to have a place to put it.
Follow-up. Thank you, Madam Mayor. What... Is there... Are there rules or requirements or things that prohibit the city from participating with the parks grant for that project? Because if it's in a city park and it's a monument, I'm curious if there's room to be creative.
You're referring to the city's parks grant program, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. That's really up to the Parks Board. That's their program. So if they decide or elect to provide funding for that, that's entirely up to the Parks Board.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's a matching grant, but if they're fundraising, it makes sense.
If they're fundraising, they're already matching.
They're already matching.
So I'm just going to throw that little idea out there.
Yeah. No, and as long as it's done before, I guess, next June 30th. So that's the only real limitation, is matching and, you know, making our parks a better place.
I'd also like to encourage us to be creative and remember that monument fundraising costs if we have any leftover unanticipated expenses, line item, somewhere.
Fantastic. So the staff will put together a proposal looking at options for funding and also get additional information from the proposer as well.
Perfect.
Counselor President... Oh, Counselor President... Wow. Starr, now go to Counselor Hussman.
Let's not get ahead of ourselves, Madam Mayor, but thank you. Your moment of sports esoterica for today. In 2004, for the first time ever in the nearly couple-century history of the game, the United States has made the final eight in the Cricket World Cup.
Oh, wow.
So cricket, seriously, cricket is absolutely having a moment in this country. It's kind of an exciting deal for the many individuals who practice it and have grown up to play it.
It sounds like it's a growing... It's a growing sport, and they're just looking for more places to play it, so.
Watch out, pickleball.
Yeah, it's no pickleball. You're right.
The segue into the question, Lisa. Did the Salem Cricket Club have specific set requirements that they're looking for when they bring the game to the turf fields, or what are they thinking?
Well, they can't have it at the turf fields.
Oh, sorry.
They want to have it... They have to put down a concrete pad that's flush with the ground, and it's a certain size. And then they bring in a mat on top of that, and that's the pitch. And then you need a diameter or a radius around the center. But I don't know all the specifics because I am a dumb American and doesn't understand cricket.
And I clearly don't know what it takes to put a cricket pitch together, so.
But I'm going to go to Mr. Brown because Mr. Brown and I have both met with the Cricket Club on other occasions, and they have been quite diligent in reaching out.
That's a good program. I mean, they had a good pitch, too. No, pun intended. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
We're good. Mr. Brown.
Yeah, it looks more like a Quidditch field than a soccer field, so it's a big oval. And through our conversations with the Cricket Club of Salem, yeah, it's a large oval. It's a 360-degree field. So in baseball, we just think of a 90-degree field. But in cricket, it's 360 degrees. So it's... The oval is in front of them and backroom. I think the dimensions of the pitch they're looking for is 10-foot by 60-foot because they're thinking of it for their youth program. The adult program, I think, is 100 feet, but they want to use it for their youth program, so. Very, very kind people and willing to take on any expenses that are incurred.
Yeah. Apparently, the cricket season goes from early spring until late September?
I don't know that season. Got me on that one.
Well, I went and I also had the handout from them, and I handed the handout to Melissa. And so she can pass it around, and you guys can, you know, look at it at your leisure. But that's what they... You know, it wasn't as glossy and shiny as the other.
But it's another opportunity for, you know, youth sports involvement in this community, one that has... Really is taking hold. The first time I heard it, I was like, well, kind of like Quidditch, although that is a thing.
Oh, yes.
I have been to Quidditch matches here in Salem and Kaiser, so it's a thing. But I think the reach for cricket is probably a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
However, with asking council for concurrence for staff to reach out to the Cricket Club to get more specifics and then options for consideration, any objection? Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having also been at that meeting, there were a couple of concerns raised by members of the Parks Board and the city staff. One of them is that where would you park? Because I think part of the parking down at that end near the boat ramp is dedicated to parking. Have from the Marine Board. So we may... We would... Might have to put some additional parking down there. And it's not in the master plan, so take a master plan amendment. So there's quite a few steps it would take to do that. Right now, that field is not very flat, so that would be another thing that would have to be another hurdle. And that field is huge. It's huge. So it would take probably most of the entirety of all that area down there.
You're talking about my cardboard box?
Probably. So anyway, it's big. So anyway, that was one... Some of the concerns that were raised. As far as the Gold Star Monument, I think it was about $150,000 or something that they're looking to raise. And that's something I think that we can get behind 100%. I mean, it's an amazing thing.
Yes. It was a very, very moving presentation, and the family is 110% behind it.
I think a lot of people today don't even know what a Gold Star family is, and that's really sad.
It's an opportunity to educate. I think Kaiser will be in a position to be able to... Like you said, this would be the first one in Oregon, and the opportunity for us to be able to elevate our Gold Star families and to bring understanding into our community. So I think it's an opportunity.
Because a lot of the other...
A lot of people are very committed. Now with the Vietnam Memorial going in at the Oregon State Capitol, this is going to go hand in glove with these efforts to appropriately honor our military.
Well, and there's so many restrictions on the... What, you know, the highways and all of this. A Gold Star family is much more inclusive. So it just... It seems like its time has come, but it was really... It was a great presentation.
I'm looking forward to seeing what the proposals and follow-up information that come forward to us so we can engage the community in this.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions on the Parks Report? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My pleasure to invite up Chief Hector Blanco with an update from Kaiser Fire District. So good to see you again.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me. Try not to make fun of my font so I can see it. So calls for the month of May were 579 for the month of May. Year-to-date, we're about 11.6% up. We're at 3,074 calls. For May, we had seven fires. We had 450 EMS calls. We had 49 calls for service. And we had 73 false alarms or CO detectors that went off in someone's home or just beeping alarms. So they were... Guys were quite busy. It is wildland season now, so the district has taken on two seasonal hires, and that is used... Not Marion County, but the funding comes from the State Fire Marshal's Office, and they fund departments throughout the area. And that allows us to get a quick jump on any kind of wildland that's happening in our jurisdiction. So we will have those individuals probably through September, maybe early October, depending on what's going on. There have been some small fires throughout the state, but nothing quite as large as, you know, we're attempting or thinking we're going to have, so hopefully that'll take care of that. With that, a reminder on defensible space grant that is with ourselves, Almsville and Marion County. The number for that is 503-588-6526. So if you live in an area where you have a lot of debris or a lot of woods, or you just have questions about what that grant covers, please call that number. Marion County is managing that grant, and they can come out, take a look, and possibly provide some funding to minimize some of the wood or whatever it may be that's going to be there. Our next car seat clinic is July 9th, and it's going to be from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Again, you can call 971-707-0472 for either more information or to schedule an appointment to have your seat inspected or locked in, or there are some grants out there that allow us to put those seats in for free, but you have to meet some requirements. But if they call that number, they can be helped with that. As far as our community risk reduction, this with our data gathering is still ongoing, including our resources. So we don't have any projected dates yet due to any neighborhood campaigns. And I think we talked a little bit about that, that we're going to be going through and doing smoke detector checks, CO detector checks, checking their dryers, et cetera. But we want to make sure that we're thanking our neighborhood associations for being our partners with that, along with the city manager and the police department are just some of them. Cory, I'm going to try to pronounce her name, Farado from the Chamber, also has been a great person to get some resources from. A thank you to Meredith Mooney, who is the outgoing chair at Kaiser United. And the new person is going to be Jennifer Polanek. So they also provided us with lots of resources and lots of names that have been assisting us with that. We've also been fortunate to find a clinical supervisor for Marion Health and County Human Services, Anna Ocelia. And we're in the position right now where we're calling her for... Or calling their team for any EDP or any mental issues or crisis, and they're coming out and helping us with those. So ourselves and Lieutenant Heim will be continuing to work on that so we can provide it for Kaiser Police as well and hopefully move forward with that. And also wanted to thank Lyndon Zeitz from Kaiser Rotary for allowing us to come in and provide a briefing on community risk reduction. And there was one more thing. Oh, on the 28th, the Southeast Kaiser Community Center is having a carnival. It's their annual carnival, so that'll be on the southeast side at their community center. So if any of you are available there, we're going to try to get an engine over there for them. And I think that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Wow. There's a lot going on.
A little bit going on, yeah. It's that type of... Time of the season, so.
First of all, thank you. This is so important to get the word out to the community, and this is just one of the many ways that, through this telecast, that people can get information. And we'll definitely be sharing your social media. I want to thank Betty Hart from the Fire Board for being a regular participant in the monthly Coffee with Kathy broadcasts. She's been great about making sure that information about Kaiser Fire is getting out to people through the Zoom and Facebook Live broadcasts, along with some of our other partners. So huge thank you there. Any questions for Chief Blanco? Thank you, especially for the car seat clinics. I understand that Kaiser Fire is one of the only or very few fire districts that's providing that on a regular basis.
I believe that's tied in with the police department, and there's some other agencies involved as well. I'm not sure if Kaiser is still involved in that. Only the chief would know that. But I know the county police are there. It's a week-long class. I think I mentioned that before, to teach them how to put a seat in, which to me sounds kind of crazy. But I guess when you're looking at the importance of who you're locking up back there, you want to make sure that they're not going to be moving around, so.
Well, getting those things installed, I've been putting in more of them recently with our grandchildren. And these car seats are very different from the ones I used when my children were small, which has been a minute. So they do take a little bit more engineering to figure out how all of those latches and things work in the cars. So I know a lot of people are really thankful that the fire district is offering this service.
Thank you.
So thank you so much.
Pass it on to the chief.
Yes, please do. And the wildland defensible... Wildland defensible space grant. Yeah, that grant. So reminding people about, you know, fire hazards around their homes and so forth. Really appreciate that. Well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
You bet. Is there anybody else here for a committee report? Okay. Public comment. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have three public hearings this evening. The one is 7A, Certification for Lighting District Assessments. B is the Text Amendment Case 24-06. And C is Resolution Supplemental Budget, General Fund Civil Forfeitures and Legal Fees. So if you're here for that, stand by. We do have one written comment, and that is from Jalen Washington, "Building a Database of Police Misconduct Settlements." As per our city attorney, the answer to the question raised about having a database for police misconduct settlements was, as a city and as an employer, we have a different role in police misconduct. We have a statutory obligation as well as a contractual obligation through the collective bargaining agreement to protect police personnel records from random disclosure to the public. We do have obligations to report certain founded misconduct to regulatory agencies such as DPSST and/or the Marion County DA's office, depending on the allegations. The system is set up to try to be fair to all involved, and the most recent legislative reforms have established more requirements for local governments to look to add some more accountability and transparency when bad acts are proven to have occurred. That said, DPSST does keep the information and believe it is available to the public. So I wanted to respond to that one. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council during public comment? Okay. We'll move on then to our first public hearing. Open to public hearing under Item 7A, a resolution, Certification of Lighting District Assessments. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, on an annual basis, the city must certify the annual lighting district assessments for property holders of record as of June 30th, 2024, so that the assessed amounts can be included on the Marion County tax rolls for fiscal year 2024-25. As background, the city administers 211 separate districts. As new subdivisions are put in the city, they're required to establish a lighting district as part of the Development Code. Existing subdivisions without lighting can establish a lighting district if they so choose based off of a vote of the majority of the property owners. So a reminder, the city fronts the cost of the electricity and putting in the lights, and then subsequently bills each of the residents in that neighborhood. then subsequently bills each of the residents in that neighborhood on their property tax statements for those costs. During 2024-25, the assessment is $436,887.77. That's up from last year, which was $421,355.55. The increase is attributed to the increase in electric costs from PGE. We're required to do this by June 30th so that they can be included on the property tax rolls for next year. We have two actions you can take tonight, adopt the attached resolution, or take no action and the city would need to find an alternate way to fund lighting throughout the city. And with that, I'd be free to address any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report or the proposed resolution? Seeing none. I do not have anybody signed up to testify under this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify at this time? The floor is open. Okay. Counsel, do you need anything else before we close the public hearing and put a motion on the floor for deliberation? Public hearing is now closed. Council President Starr.
I move the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R.2024, certification of lighting district assessments for fiscal year 2024-25.
Second.
It's been moved down seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R.2024, certification of lighting district assessments for fiscal year 2024-25. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying no. No objection. Motion passes unanimously. We will now go to item 7B, public hearing, text amendment case 2024-06, proposed changes to Kaiser Development Code regarding planning commission decisions and setback requirements along arterial and collector streets. Public hearing is now open and this goes to Mr. Witham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Council. So there's a whole lot of sections with a whole lot of pages, but not a ton of redlined writing, as you noticed in the packet. The text amendments that are before you, there's 24 sections of the code, so I apologize. It's just when we change one thing procedurally, oftentimes it just is a domino effect of having to align things. And thank you to staff in the planning department, as well as the legal department that catch all of those little pieces and nuances. But the substance of the changes that are requested from Planning Commission is primarily so that Planning Commission can take a more active role in some of our land use processes. Historically, staff has been the decision maker for variances and conditional use permits. And Planning Commission would like to weigh in on those and actually hear those decisions. And last spring, they had directed staff to do some research. We brought it to them. They considered it. They might have, they might have changed their mind a couple times on what they wanted to do, but at the May meeting, we landed on what is before you tonight. It was unanimously voted that they wanted to recommend the changes that would result in them hearing any variance request. So a variance would be anything that is requesting to modify a quantified standard in our code. We don't, we don't process a ton of them, but there are times where due to topography or, or just somebody's development objective, they ask for an exception to the rule. And since it's an exception to the rule, honestly, staff feels like it's very appropriate to have that happen in, in front of the Planning Commission. And conditional uses, while they're, while they're allowed uses outright, the question is, is what are the appropriate conditions to place on those? And so those were the two areas where Planning Commission wanted to have more say. So what we're doing is we're proposing to move those from a staff level decision to a Planning Commission level decision. And then in addition, Planning Commission would like to weigh in on Kaiser Station master plan amendments. Currently, the process is that if we have a master plan in Kaiser Station and somebody comes in to change it, they can actually do quite a bit with an amendment, as we saw with Area D, where it was a pretty significant change, but because square footages were the same and, and all of that, it was still an amendment and not a brand-new process. So it would add a layer of timing to it because it would create two instances of a public hearing at a minimum. But Planning Commission would like to make a recommendation to council on those master plan amendments. And that's like 13 of the sections address all of those changes. The other 11 sections is literally removing a sentence from basically every zoning designation. And what that is doing is currently on a collector and arterial street, so a River Road, a Lock Haven, a Shimawa, there's a bunch of other ones. But on the busier streets, we've historically had this setback requirement of 20 feet for any building to those streets. With the exception of in the revitalization plan areas and the centers along River Road, we actually have a maximum setback of 10 feet. And so there's some inconsistency there. And so what we are recommending, what Planning Commission is recommending, excuse me, it's not we, I'm just the staff person, but is to, to reduce that setback, basically to eliminate the footnote and have it apply across the board, across the city, where any time you have a street-side setback, it would be 10 feet. So that, that is the, the crux of the amendments before you. As I said, we had a public hearing on May 8th. It was a unanimous vote to recommend approval to council. And you have the choice to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to come back to you with findings for adoption, or you could change things or say, no, don't do it. It is up to you. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Questions on the staff report with proposed changes to the development code? So I've got a couple. One, and you've just answered part of it, which is the setback going from 20 to 10. So right now, in our walkable areas in the River Cherry overlay district, that's already at 10.
It's a maximum of 10 in those areas, yeah.
So in terms of buffering from the roadway into the walkable areas, going from the 10, the 20 to the 10, you're still going to have enough space in between to move sidewalks still inset away from River Road, correct?
Yes, yeah. And, and the other thing is, is with redevelopment projects, we have, if we don't have enough right-of-way, we would actually require right-of-way dedication at the time of development. So this would be a setback to either the existing line when the right-of-way is adequate or the new right-of-way line if dedication is required. And it would still have the 10 feet beyond. So, I mean, I, I have to be a little bit careful here because we all know what River Road looks like and some of our other streets where we may have buildings that are, I mean, maybe, there's a few buildings that I know of that might actually be in right-of-ways currently. So those we would have problems with regardless. But with a, a standard redevelopment plan, you would like, for example, there's a building right now on River Road that has a big fence around it. And we all know that one. There is a plan for a redevelopment project on there, although we've yet to see applications. But that will be one where they may be required to dedicate some right-of-way on River and I think for sure on Churchdale, around that corner, because I don't think there's enough right-of-way there. So, and then those setbacks would measure from where that new right-of-way line is.
So that, so a project like that, which is redevelopment, would be under the 10. Is that in one of our walkable friendly areas? I know it's close.
Funny story. It's, it's exactly one parcel south of our center. So they actually requested a variance so that they could actually provide some parking on the site with what they're trying to do, which we, we actually granted. It happens to be that this particular amendment will actually, I mean, they, they did that like over a year ago. So, or last year sometime, it was a while ago. They've, they've not moved as quickly on their project, I guess. And so they've, they're not going to end up needing the variance they got requested, frankly, is what's going to end up happening on that project. Yeah, if this passes. Yeah. Thank you.
For the caveat, appreciate that. So my other question is on the, the variances. There is legislation around, I'm trying to remember the bill number because there were so many floating around the last two sessions regarding variances and limiting the ability of cities to deny variances. Is this going to impact that? I think it had mostly to do with the Housing Production Bill that was signed into law by the governor. Is this going to change or restrict our ability or make it more difficult for our Planning Commission with these variances?
If, if Attorney Lindsey has an opinion on that, I'd like to hear it.
So what you're talking about now is, it has a slightly different lingo in the way that the legislation was written and, and they call them adjustments. And they've, they've put them, well, no, but it is the same idea. But they're really minor variances. So in, in a lot of them, it's like one foot adjustment wouldn't be then even a consideration, like you have to allow it. Or, you know, to certain setbacks. So if you had a 10-foot setback, they can adjust when that comes into, when it becomes operative. You know, you, somebody might be actually, even though the, there's a 10-foot setback, I need to adjust that by one foot, that would be allowable under the law and we could say nothing to stop that. So that, that's the sort of thing. Some of the others are, would really impact us, which is certain review design stuff. So like facades and the type of materials and stuff like that can, can actually really be impacted because they're, they're really pushing for the, the clear and objective standards being almost too robotic in my assessment. But we'll have to look at the code at that time and, and make some adjustments ourself to the adjustments that are coming down the pipe.
Yeah.
We state rulemaking, this is not something that we can control, but we might be able to testify as they're doing the rulemaking.
Yeah, and I know, you know, there was a, there was an initial try at this legislation and then it got tabled or set aside and then came back. And, you know, I will say this, I don't know exactly what it's going to end up looking like. I have a tiny bit of experience over the last few years of having to modify all kinds of things in response to state legislation. So I expect that we will be back before the Planning Commission at some point in the near future, when these things kind of settle and we know what we have to do. So my hope is, with the changes we're proposing here, I think what's going to end up happening is we're probably going to have to lift in a new category of adjustments or something like that that doesn't currently exist in response to that. So we've had to do that a few times, it feels like. I don't know, I might, I might be overly sensitive to it.
Every session is like, oh my goodness, what are we going to have to change now? So yes, we've been doing a little bit too much defense, but at least sometimes we get a chance to weigh in. But my final question goes to that. Because of the complexity is, with what you're proposing here and what the Planning Commission is recommending, the expertise necessary to navigate the complexities of these variances of Planning Commission, staff, this balance? Can you help me understand?
Yeah, yeah, you know, we talked, we actually talked about that and that was, that was part of the reason why initially when this was discussed at Planning Commission months and months ago, there was concerns and some discussion around that specifically. The way that it's set up, staff is still in a recommendation posture. So this, for a variance or a conditional use, which for the last 26 years, I've written probably most of the ones we've processed, frankly, I'll still be writing all of the staff reports, I'll still be recommending conditions of approval. Really what, what Planning Commission's interest is and what we've tried to do with the way we structured the language and the tweaks, is that it really gives a better tool for engaging the community members where the applications are being proposed. It gives the ability for people to come down, to speak their mind, to testify, and for Planning Commission to consider that and then possibly add additional conditions or see something that isn't just the simple black and white that Shane has to always look at. So, so that's really what the desire is behind it, if that, if that helps answer.
That helps tremendously for me, thank you. Anything further? Was it Counsel Reed? No, okay. Counselor Duran.
So when this was initially brought up, I was not real keen on this, you know, being on the Planning Commission as long as I was, it's just going to, you know, add another layer. But after going through this, I, I feel it's a definite benefit because people are, the citizens will be able to come in and see what's happening instead of it just being done behind the scenes. So there's just a little more room for comment. So I, I believe it's a good thing. It may slow things down a little bit, but I think with the, the volume that they'll see, it won't be that bad. So I, I definitely agree with it now.
That helps a great deal. Appreciate that. Counselor Kohler.
Just really quickly, the transparency and the, the public's ability to actually put their thoughts in is really, really important for a lot of folks. There have been a couple of things that have been approved recently that they said, well, gosh, don't we get a chance to? Well, yeah, you can come in, but it's our, the decision's already made, there's not much you can do. And that was hard. So we appreciate this.
Yeah. All right. I don't have anybody signed up for this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address the council under this public hearing? Me answered all your questions, that's fabulous. All right. Anything else the council needs before we close the public hearing? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Counsel President Starr.
I move the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an ordinance for adoption of proposed text amendments, along with any other identified changes necessary for consistency with the Kaiser Development Code.
Second.
It's been moved down seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare an ordinance for adoption of the proposed text amendments, along with any other identified changes necessary for consistency with the Kaiser Development Code. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying no. No objection. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 7C, resolution supplemental budget, general fund civil forfeitures and legal fees. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council. At the May 6, 2024 City Council meeting, the city manager was authorized to enter into a settlement agreement regarding the ongoing civil forfeiture related to a criminal drug rate in 2022. The supplemental budget is to account for the financial implications of the settlement and the related legal fees. Surprisingly, there's about six different agencies that we have to share some of those civil proceeds with. And then we get to deduct, deduct the lawyer costs and then that's what the city will, will end up with. Typically, we don't end up with a lot when there's a civil forfeiture, but we may get a little, little something out of this in the end. Those dollars will roll over into next year because obviously we won't be able to spend those. So we'll probably have to come back to the city council to reappropriate at some point in time. However, that's, the forfeiture amount was about $190,000. So we're going to recognize that and then appropriate it to account for those legal fees and settlement costs. In addition, at the May 20th, 2024 City Council meeting, city staff is authorized to move forward to resolve the peers tier one and tier two issue associated with including deferred compensation contributions as subject salary for retirement purposes. The supplemental budget is to recognize $50,000 of working capital and then appropriate those for the legal fees associated with resolving that issue. Those are the two issues before you and I'd be free to address any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions on these two appropriations? Okay. I don't have any myself. We don't have anybody signed up for the public hearing. Would anybody like to address the council under this public hearing? Okay, very clear cut. Anything further from council before I close the public hearing? Public hearing is now closed. Counsel President Starr.
I move the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R.2024, authorization for supplemental budget, general fund civil forfeitures and legal fees.
Second.
It's been moved down seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R.2024, authorization for supplemental budget, general fund civil forfeitures and legal fees. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying no. No objection. Motion passes unanimously and that concludes the public hearings for this evening. We will now go to administrative action, item 8A, which is resolution, authorizing the city manager to sign the first amendment to meter reader service agreement. Mr. Brown? I'll say it once.
Mr. Lawyer will handle these items.
All right, Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. The city's contracted for meter reading services for over 20 years and it has proven to be the most cost-effective way to obtain the data necessary to build residence for their water use. The company, Meter Readers LLC, has provided these, that provides these services, has requested an increase to the amount they charge per meter. The current fee is 65 cents per meter and Meter Readers has requested an increase to 98 cents per meter. Again, this has proven to be the most cost-effective way to get the meters read. They've requested this in- They've requested this increase to cover increase on their cost for doing business, primarily insurance for the scooters that they ride while they read the meters. Their insurance company would no longer cover them and they had to go shop insurance and it dramatically increased in cost. We issued a request for, for proposals in 2021 for these services and Meter Readers LLC was the only one to respond. We need to read these meters monthly to provide the data necessary to bill residents accurately for the, for the water they use each, each month. The requested increase is approximately an additional $22,500 cost to the water fund and that has been included in the City Council adopted fiscal year 2425 water fund budget. The annual cost of these services of $65,900 is less than providing these services with city staff. And we also do not have to provide and maintain the technical equipment for inputting and downloading the monthly meter reads. Most cities do this work themselves, so the market for this business, for business providing this service is very minimal, which results in they're the only ones that reply to our, RFPs. They've consistently been the only company to bid on these services for the last 20 years with only one exception, and that one exception was a company out of California that when the proposals were evaluated, Meter Readers was shown to be the best choice. Approval of this contract amendment will allow for the increase to take effect on July 1st. Council approval is necessary because of the total dollar amount included in the contract amendment. Staff recommends the City Council adopt a task resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the contract amendment with Meter Readers LLC. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Lawyer. Counsel President Starr? And then I'll go to Counsel Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Length of this new amendment to the contract?
The contract was three-year contract with two two-year extensions, so it just, it just goes for until the end of the extensions.
And that would be?
Four more years, if we choose to extend it. Right at the end of the first three-year term.
Okay.
So there's two two-year extensions available.
Thank you. And then I have a follow-up. Follow-up? So if we bill every two months, how, what's the logic? It's just more of an education question for me. Why do we read every month and then only bill every other month?
Great question. We bill half the city one month, the next half the next month. So we read every month, although we only read half the city at a time.
Thank you.
Counsel Cross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel President Starr asked one of my questions. So, all up, so you said that you did an RFP in 2021. Why didn't we do another RFP this time?
Honestly, I thought it was a waste of time because, well, we weren't required to for, first of all.
This is the extension period as well, so it's a, it's kind of a trigger point if you want to extend it or not, but they're asking at the extension period to.
Well, yeah, and I guess because I wasn't here for the other three, I'm just like, really, that's a 50% increase. So, hey, a lot of things change in three years, right? I think I was wearing a mask three years ago. So just really for education points, I guess the why.
Based on historical experience, when we've done, I can't remember how many times we've done RFPs and meter readers was the only response. It seemed kind of futile to do that exercise again, when I expect they would be the only respondent.
And, and what I need to say is, this is an allowable extension because of the way the contract was, there's two two-year extensions. The problem is, it's at the point where, because it's at an extension, they're asking for this increase. If this is not acceptable to the council, we could go out for an RFP right now. It's what Mr. Lawyer is saying is he's doubtful that that will be fruitful at all and so he's asking you guys to just look at this increase.
I completely understand it and I get that the probability is that he's probably right, but I think just in the accounting that we still are spending extra money, I think it's, I think it's always good to err on the side of caution and be very thorough on that stuff. But thank you for your hard work.
If I may, I have researched options for obtaining meter reads over the last, I don't know, 15 years. And there are systems out there, automatic meter reading systems, that agencies can read from their office or read from driving down a street and collect all the reads for the meters in one fell swoop. I've evaluated that. It's about a million-dollar investment to upgrade our system to, to that type of system, to upgrade our water system for that kind of meter reading system. And there's really no payback. The only payback that is available is customer information. Customers can log on and see what their actual water use is every minute of the day. They can find out what their peak hour use is and when that peak hour is and that kind of data. But it doesn't generate revenue for the city. It doesn't generate an increase in accuracy. It just literally is a cost to the citizens that we would have to increase the rates to pay for. And the minimal payback that you get from theoretical increased accuracy relates to about a 30-year payback. And let me, let me change that statement. The increased accuracy and the savings from the contracted meter reading is about a 30-year payback. The meters need to be replaced at 20 or 25 years. So it's really just, I, I can't make economical sense out of proposing that to the community. So I have found this is the most efficient and effective way to get the meters read.
Counsel President Starr, Counselor Cross has a follow-up, if I may, and I'll come to you.
Um, yeah.
All right, Counsel Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand all that. I just really am coming from the fact, like, if I'm coming in at home and you explain that, I think the more information that we have or the public has, the better. So that's where I'm coming from. Not that I do not appreciate your historical knowledge in this community, but I think that when we are able to say, here it is, here's the information, that's when the trust with the council and the public just becomes stronger and stronger. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counsel President Starr, then I'll go to Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Lawyer, does the current contract allow them to change the price on us?
No, the current contract has no price escalation in it. It was set for three years. They came to me and requested an increase with their justification in addition to just typical increase in operational cost, the insurance piece. We could say no. I mean, we could say no to them.
And then what?
Well, then they have to keep reading at the current rate and my guess is they'll cancel their contract and then we'll be stuck with no way to read meters. Now, that's my guess.
What's their, what's their time, their cancellation clause in the contract? Is it like six months, 30 days?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I would have to research that. I, I think it's, I think if I have to answer, I think it's about 90 days.
Three months?
Yeah. Yeah.
So there's no cost escalator? They're just asking and we're saying yes? You, or you're asking us to say yes, even though their contract is for 65 cents a meter?
Yes. And I'm asking primarily because they have done us very, very well over the years. They don't come asking for increases, they live with their contract. This is the first time they've ever done this. And I have a level of respect for them, for the service they provide, the accuracy that they do in reading meters. I will say, I think in all the years they've been doing this and I've been, when I've been aware of a suspected misread or a meter that was read inaccurately, I think there's only been one time that it was proven they were wrong. Every other time, they were right. So that's kind of the back, some of the background on why I'm in favor of allowing them, or why I'm bringing it to you. If I wasn't in favor of this, obviously, I wouldn't bring it to you for consideration.
Follow-up?
Yeah, so essentially, it's less than two weeks' notice. Cause it says this is going to take effect on July 1st and it's June 17th.
That's really on staff and to make the decision to bring this forth at this meeting. We've known about this for about a month and a half, had this ink for about a month and a half. Part of it was waiting for budget process to be over, to make sure that there weren't any issues involved with the budget that would prevent this and then put it on the agenda, so.
And so what was the, the impetus for them increasing the cost? Anything in particular?
As I mentioned earlier, their ongoing operational costs, just, just inflation, but the biggest thing was insurance coverage for their scooters.
Insurance coverage for their scooters?
Cause they ride scooters to read the meters and the company that had been insuring them for, I don't know how long, for quite some time, said they, we will no longer insure you and they had to go find new insurance and the cost was something like four times higher for them.
To keep reading them on scooters versus? Thank you.
Counsel Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I just, I guess I, I need a little bit of clarification on, okay, on the cost of the services being $65,900. So is that for one person doing all the meter readers or do they have a team of meter readers?
I believe in Kaiser, one person does all the reads.
Okay. So even that $65,900 would be far cheaper than the probably $90,000 to $100,000 that a person would cost us to do, right? So when you're saying that the, this would, that cost is less than providing the services with the city staff, that's pretty much what you're talking about, is it would require one additional person to be able to do this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And also, as I mentioned, there's, there's the background equipment, the software program and the, I'll call it a handheld unit, the input that reads into, those are, those are all costs that I don't even, I haven't even researched, but that's a whole other part.
Equipment plus the person to do?
Well, the city, yeah, that's the equip, the $65,000, this, this number, you would have a person plus all the equipment and a scooter or a vehicle for that person to drive or ride while reading meters.
And the insurance?
And the insurance.
Okay, thank you.
And coverage, even if somebody is out, another person from the company swaps in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Lawyer. Okay, I just kind of Googled water meter readings in cities. So, and I already read about one of them that you talked about, but I saw that the city of Newburgh has a radio read. Have we ever looked into that?
Yes. That's the automatic reading system I mentioned earlier.
Okay, there's just quite a, there's just quite a lot out there. So I guess with the inquisitive nature of myself and I will just loop in, Counsel President Starr, I believe that the more information is always better with us. Thank you.
All right, anything further? Okay. Counsel President Starr?
I move the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2024, authorizing the city manager to sign the first amendment to meter reader service agreement.
Second?
It's been moved on second that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2024, authorizing the city manager to sign the first amendment to meter reader service agreement. Any discussion? I will go to, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just ask that possibly when this comes up again in two years, that we can just get some more information on RFPs or other up-to-date technology. Thank you.
And the one comment I would make is that one of, it says here right on our, our agendas that we're looking at how we can do, deliver services in a cost-effective manner and I really appreciate, you know, in this report, again, reviewing options, that even at 98 cents per meter is not something that a cost analysis indicates that we can bring in-house at this time, but to continue to look at options until it can come into house. And we tip that point from, it's more cost-effective to contract, at some point tips in to be cost-effective to bring in-house. So it's something we continually have to watch as a lean organization. So I appreciate attention to that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm, I just missed Counselor Starr.
That's fine, it's been voted on. It's fine, go ahead.
No, I'm going to back up. I missed you and I'm sorry. Counselor, Counsel President Starr?
Did we try to negotiate this price increase since it wasn't written into the contract?
I did not.
So we're just taking on face value what they're bringing to us and asking without negotiating, saying it's not written into the contract, can we split the cost and then revisit it at two years? We're just, they're coming to us and saying 98 cents and we're saying, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I vote now?
Now we can vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed signify by saying no.
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 Motion passes 5-2. The notes are Cross and Starr. All right, that takes us to item 8B, which is Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter an Agreement with Hicks Striping and Curbing LLC for Repainting of Pavement Legends. Mr. Lawyer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A request for proposals is advertised through the formal bidding process soliciting contractors to provide pavement, pavement marking services for the city of Kaiser. These services include the annual painting of stop bars, crosswalks, turn arrows, school zones and other required markings on streets throughout Kaiser. These services do not include the lane striping as those services are provided by Marion County. The city received three, three proposals for consideration. The proposals were reviewed and scored by the review committee and the results of the scoring showed Hicks Curbing and Striping LLC to be the preferred subcontractor. The current contract for these services has ended and the city has a need for these, for a contractor to provide these services ongoing. Failure to keep the pavement markings clean and visible could result in crashes and accidents, accidents throughout the city. Again, we're talking about stop bars, crosswalks, turn arrows and all the various pavement markings that you see on streets in Kaiser. Approval of this contract will cost the street fund $156,107 the first year and will increase to $160,830 in year three. The expired contract price was $65,270 in the final year of the contract. The additional 97, $90,837 was not included in the City Council adopted fiscal year 2425 budget. A budget adjustment will need to take place to allocate these additional funds should this proposal be approved by the City Council. Approval of this contract will allow the pavement markings, pavement markings to be repainted during the dry, warm summer months. City Council is, approval is required due to the amount and length of this contract. I did not put this in writing in the staff report, but the other two quotes were considerably higher for these services. One was 300 and some thousand and one was 700 and some thousand. I was embarrassed to put that in writing, so I thought I'd just tell you that.
Whoa.
Yeah. Staff recommends the council adopt the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into the contract with Hicks Curbing and Striping for the annual pavement marking services. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That was a bit of a jaw dropper on the comp, on the other proposals. I'm almost afraid to ask, what were they, was that the, I don't want to do this bid?
I honestly don't know. I, I really don't. I think one of the, one of the contractors, it was just that. If I'm going to get this work, I'm going to make a lot of money at it. The other one was from a company I'm not familiar with. I've never seen him quote anything, so I really don't know. And honestly, I was quite taken aback by Hicks price. They've been doing these services for the city for quite some time after previous RFPs and I don't know why their price went virtually doubled, but it is what it is.
So when the breakdown in the RFP, it had labor and materials?
The RFP was, I'm not sure I quite fully understand your question. The, the pricing was, was by marking, in other words, by crosswalk, by arrow, by bike symbol, by stop bar. And they're just all per each, much, much higher than they were before. And this is a maximum dollar amount. There are, it's not uncommon in any given year that they don't paint everything because some of our markings are thermoplastic, reflective thermoplastic and they don't need painting or need updating, but we bid it as though everything is done every year. So the true actual annual cost will be less than this. I just don't know how much and I have to plan for the worst.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to Counsel Hesman, then Counsel Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Lawyer, for the update on this one. According to this, contractor is going to give Public Works the list of projects that are going to be handled over time. So week over, week over week, essentially contractor is going to submit a list to say what of the listed projects are going to be done and that's been provided for us, so thank you for that. To what extent are you and the Public Works team exerting influence over where they should mark?
They should mark everything unless we agree that it does not need updating. They go to every marking throughout the city every year and give us a weekly update of what they've done and coordinate. and give us a weekly update of what they've done and coordinate with Mike Griffin. And he will approve or deny them not updating a particular marking. For instance, a bike, a bike legend on, I'm going to say on Schmawa. They, they think it doesn't need updated. He'll disagree with them, tell them to go back and do it.
Okay. Follow-up.
Follow-up.
And then with the, with the changes to the contract, I'd imagine there have been changes over time to markings. What's that process look like historically in terms of that negotiation and how, how that gets resolved in the term of the contract as we see it here?
They give us a price per marking for the first three years of the contract. So year one, year two, year three, for bike symbols and each individual marking, a per foot price for painting yellow curb and all those costs. And those costs are applied to what they, work they perform each year based on that schedule of prices.
Okay, thank you. One more follow-up.
Okay.
This company does green paint. They, do they do, are they authorized to do that type of lane infill like, like some cities have for bike lanes?
I believe so, if we ask them to.
Okay, thank you. And that TSBP meeting is this coming week. That will inevitably be a subject of discussion and debate. They will want to know what flexibility the city has with respect to our contracting, and they would also probably want to understand the mechanics as it relates to budget and contractual agreement. So this is getting, this is collecting some information that we need to know for future improvements, which have been suggested, but I, I should note for the record have not been voted on in committee or brought to the council for recommendation.
They have, actually.
For green paint?
Yeah.
If you're referring to the changes to the bike lane on Lockhaven.
That's, yes, that is one.
Also on Schmawa Road, I brought to the council under other business two meetings ago, the costs for the, for the consultant to provide a recommendation. And the council did not direct me to have those studies done.
I understand. Mr. Lawyer, please accept, please offer me forgiveness as I was not here two meetings ago.
No worries.
I'm still in a little bit of catch-up mode, but I appreciate being caught up, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is for Mr. Lawyer. It's kind of a two-parter. When did these RFPs go out and when did we review and score them?
They went out, I believe it was in April, early April, late March, early April. They were scored in May, just about the time the budget meetings would take place.
Why didn't we, so I guess that is my follow-up. Why didn't we include them in the budget?
I didn't have the numbers at the time. I didn't know what to include. I included the current contracts amount. I did not have these amounts to include in the budget.
You didn't have any of those amounts, like when we started meeting in May, that week of May 13th?
I did not.
Okay. And then where will this money come from, Mr. Wood? Just out of unanticipated expenses or just?
If I may, if I may, my recommendation to cover these additional costs is to take the money from the unanticipated expenses line item in the capital outlay section of the street fund, which is currently at $200,000, and move it to contractual service in the operations portion.
And how long is this contract for, our last one?
Three years.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if it's three years, where's the 2026 work date? Because all I see on here under point number two in the contract, time of completion. Is it in an addendum that I missed? Because if it's three years, it would be 24, 25, 26.
I'm not sure what you're looking at, so I'm, I'm a little bit.
I'm looking at the contract.
You got the actual contract, okay. I don't have that in front of me. Okay.
So point number, item number two in the contract has time of completion. So it has the dates for 2024, and then it has the dates for 2025. But if it's a three-year contract, I don't see 2026 in the contract. And then upon, it does say upon written agreement from the parties, this contract may be extended for an additional two years. So is it a two-year contract with one two-year extension, or is it a three-year contract?
Well, it looks like it's a two-year contract with the extensions. I thought it was a three-year contract because I thought they gave us three years' worth of pricing.
Can?
Thought it was in here too, so I.
What does it look like if we figure that out before we vote on it? Does it mean it delays the start of work since it's effective July 1st? And this is June 17th?
I don't think it would cause them to not be able to finish by the specified dates within the contract.
Does it change the cost significantly if it's a three-year contract? Are we supposed to get reduced, is it, like, is our pricing better?
They've issued pricing for three years within, within this document. Why the contract is only two years with the extension, I honestly can't speak to that. Legal department put together, I missed it in my review. That's the answer I've got.
I'm not going to vote on a contract if it's wrong then.
Not saying the contract's wrong. Contract's right. I was wrong saying it's a three-year contract. It's a two-year contract.
But they gave you three-year pricing.
Mm-hmm.
What do we know, is it better?
Better than?
Well, if we do a three-year contract, are we getting better pricing? Versus a two-year contract with two years' worth of pricing?
I would say we have them walked into a third-year pricing now. We extend the contract after two years. We've already got their pricing for the third year, so we're locking them in. So it could be a better deal for us.
But we don't know.
Well, it depends on inflation between now and that third year. Does that make sense?
What about the, okay, so here, you, so you extend it for two years, then we're missing a year's worth of pricing if they only gave you three years of pricing?
Correct.
So why would we vote, why would we have a contract with a two-year extension if you only have pricing for three years?
We would get that, have to get that second year of the extension upon extending the contract. We already have the first year of extension. We would just need to get a second year pricing for the second year of that extension. I apologize. I'm, I should have read this closer. I thought historically, these have been three-year contracts. And I didn't catch it. Tammy didn't share, share that with me clearly, and that's, that's on me. I missed it.
Counsel Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think there's any, Mr. Lawyer, you did a fantastic job. You did a lot of work on this. I don't think there's any reason to apologize. I think that I would probably echo what Shaney said. If there's not a problem, we meet on July 1st to have the correct contract to vote on. I would feel more comfortable on it.
Mr. Lindsey?
No, there, there's no issue if, it would be good to have not only the meeting of the minds as to, you know, term like the, but then also to have the answers that you guys want and feel comfortable with, so not, not an issue. And we can easily bring it back to you with those on July 1st.
Mr. Lawyer.
That's fine. Do I understand you want a three-year contract with an extension? Or a two-year contract with the pricing through the second extension?
I just want it to match. So if they gave you three years of pricing, then we should get a three-year contract and whatever the extension should be. Whether it's another three-year extension or a two-year, do you see, like?
No, I understand, understand. I will say I may have a bit of a challenge getting them to commit to pricing.
Well, even if they gave us three years, three years, it's fine.
Okay. Got it. Okay, perfect.
Whatever, whatever was in the proposal, that, I believe that needs to be the foundation for the contractual agreement. So just double-check to make sure it matches, that it matches the proposal, because that's what they've contractually agreed to. And then come back on July 1st so we can consider it for adoption.
Will do.
All right.
Thank you.
Counselor Hesman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wanted to vocalize my opinion, Mr. Lawyer, that it would, I believe, I believe it would be in our best interest if we had a three-year contract to vote on with extension options as negotiated by you and Mr. Lindsey and the team as we go. So stating my preference there.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, let's go then to item 8C, which is the discussion regarding the Community Diversity Engagement Committee appointment process. And I'll go to Mr. Wood, and then Ms. Rodick is still here to answer our questions on this recommendation from the committee. So if you want to come on up, we'll go to Mr. Wood and then Ms. Rodick.
Madam Mayor, City Council, during the March 11, 2024 joint work session, the CDEC was asked to review the scope of the CDEC for possible changes. Based on that request, the committee did move forward and make an official motion to change how committee members are appointed to the CDEC. Currently, the members are appointed by individual counselors. The motion was to move that we direct staff to bring an updated resolution application information to present to council to change how the appointment process is handled. The change is to move from counselor-appointed members to having an appointment process handled by the volunteer coordinating committee. In addition, the volunteer coordinating committee would be provided specific interview questions and a scoring sheet. This was based on the unique requirements of the CDEC committee. Some of the benefits of that is the process would be consistent with other city committees. The pool of applicants may be larger, as it wouldn't depend on having a personal relationship with a specific city counselor. And the VCC could use a standardized review process that focuses on the specific tasks for all potential appointees. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the committee chair.
Any questions for us?
I know that was one of your requests, was the question of, should we update it on how they're appointed with counselor appointee or volunteer coordinating commission? And that's what we met on last meeting.
Yes, there are, there are questions, and I'll go to Counsel Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, you two. Like TNT, like dynamite, right? Tell them, either one of you can tell me. So really, I'd love to know, like, I mean, definitely there's pros and cons to anything, but why do you feel strongly on this side rather than the other side?
So I think transparency would be huge, because we would see the pool of applicants that wouldn't be part of the committee. There's a standardized questions that we would ask of every, any candidate, and the volunteer coordinating committee would have a rubric. And so they would be able to score, just like with any interview questions. It also provides more accessibility, so it's not who you know, but it's your desire to serve on the city committee. And I think it increases the pool of applicants that way.
Follow-up?
I think we have a pretty strong group. We have a pretty dedicated group. But we're going to have a couple of vacant positions. There's one, I think, that we know of, and then Avea for the, for the student one. So I think that would take the burden off of you appointing someone and recruiting someone, and then it would open to the committee and the community to be able to apply for that community. So it's less about who you know and more about the work that you want to do, so. Yeah. And I don't. Yeah. Yeah, and I think, so just to be clear, we wouldn't be selecting it, right? So that would be a conflict of interest. We're not saying, it's not a who belongs where club. The volunteer coordinating committee will appoint and decide who from the applicant should be part of the committee. We won't have any say on it. Our say will be on having the questions ahead of time and having a scoring sheet for them to use as guidance. They make the decision and then provide to us who they think the best candidate is. Because we have interview questions. So questions about interest ahead of time and trying to find just a common, where folks are coming from and what knowledge they bring to the committee so that we can level set and hopefully onboard them better than some of the other committees. Yeah, of course.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counsel President Starr, then Counsel Reed.
Hi.
Hello.
Who is going to approve the questions? Who's going to develop them and then sign off on approval of them?
We talked about it as a committee last meeting and have a recommendation. We can bring it to you for review.
For people that are watching at home, can you explain that?
We have a set of questions that we looked at. We actually used the city of Wilsonville application as the example, modified it a bit. We're going to bring it to you here to review, and then the scoring sheet as well. So you can review the documents, approve, make edits and modifications. And then they go through the volunteer coordinating committee, and from them, they implement selection, recruitment, what have you.
So is it, I just want to be clear, is the council going to approve the questions? Or are you sending it through staff? Or are you sending it through staff to us to approve and then over to VCC? I just want people to understand the process.
Mr. Wood.
Madam Mayor, City Council, yeah, the official process would be the CDEC proposes the questions to the city council. I would bring them at the, at our next meeting if you direct me to do that.
That would be to then amend the, what we call the Attachment A. Each committee has its own Attachment A, which has delineates the specifics for each committee, and it would be embedded in that, similar to what we did not too long ago with the volunteer coordinating committee. We went through and did an in-depth change to the structure and process for the volunteer coordinating committee, and then adopted it into the Attachment A for that committee. So that would be the space that would come in and come before the city council. Great question. Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And in our discussions about this on the Community Diversity Engagement Committee, this was not meant to be a, I guess because this is the newest committee that we have in the city. We kind of, it could be looked at as setting a suggestion for other committees. If they want to have these, these kind of questions for their specific committees, they could also do that as well. That, that might be another way to fine-tune the volunteer coordinating committee process. So it was not meant to say we are the only ones that could do this, but it was meant to do things the way that we would like to see it done and perhaps set a precedent for other committees as well.
I do recall there was a conversation at the volunteer coordinating committee about what it would look like if some basic questions were developed for different committees that could be a guidance for the VCC to use in their interview process. It's not to be exclusive, or you must follow the script, but to have a few specifics that seem germane to the purpose and objectives of that committee. So I think that's what this fits in. Is that how I understand, is that understanding correct?
It's like interview questions, but they would get them ahead of time. So it isn't also just to get people, right? They would have, the candidates would have time to prepare. They would know what we're asking, what the community is asking them ahead of time.
Okay. Sounds fair. So they could prepare for, and think it through. Counsel President Starr.
So if this, just watch out and thinking out loud, so be warned. Does it make sense, if we've talked about this at VCC, about coming up with other questions, does it make sense to have them all at the same time? So we're making sure that everything is, there's consistency in everything rather than doing CDEC once and then maybe a year later doing the arts commission? And then, so making sure that if we're going to do this, it's implemented on a consistent, I guess, a consistent way across the committees of the city rather than just when we get them done? Just a, just a thought. I, I think there's wisdom in doing them all at the same time rather than just one-off, if that's what the direction is.
I've got one comment, I'll go to Counsel Reed. I think that starting a process where we ask each committee to start developing theirs so they can put the time and recommendation in to bring that forward. I think it's a good idea to stop the process of one committee that's ready to go waiting on another one. I think loses the bubble on what the committee is ready to move forward with. So that would be my preference.
But can I follow up with that? So has there been a decision that we're doing this across the board with all the committees?
It's been a conversation with the volunteer.
Right, it's been a conversation, but there hasn't been a decision. So if we're going to do it with one committee, shouldn't we have a decision of whether we're going to do it for all of them?
So I would love to send that back to the volunteer coordinating. So I would love to send that back to the volunteer coordinating committee and ask them to have that conversation, and then we can have that conversation with the different committees. I think that's a fair thing to do. I think with what the recommendation I'm hearing from the CEDC is that because of the nature of this particular committee, and this is a process that they are proposing to make it more transparent and equitable for people who are wanting to come and do this work, is how I understand it. I'm going to go councillor Reed, and then I can come back to you.
I see this as a pilot program. You know, I think too, that with the change of, from going from an appoint, appointment situation to a, the volunteer coordinating committee, we're making that change anyway. So it seems to me a good way, good opportunity to pilot this, and then we can also, again, see how it goes and see if it is something that the other committees would like to adopt.
Thank you. Councillor Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to echo with councillor, I mean, this is, again, this is one of those, I like to say diversity of thought, because that's what I really think, and diversity of where you come from, that's what I truly believe what diversity is. So I would echo what councillor, councillor President Starr said about if we're going to do it, I'd love to see a work session with maybe all the chairs of all the committees getting together and setting a precedence for everyone, so maybe one isn't just out here on an island. But I can see how councillor Reed sees it another way, and that's okay too. But because of that, that's why, and you two both know, I adore you both personally and professionally, I will be voting no on this tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Cross, I must respectfully disagree, in that I think the CDEC was designed in part to be a different committee, because in some ways, the work of the CDEC overlaps with other city committees in a way that no other group does, at least, at least no other citizen-run, volunteer-structured group. And to that end, it's, there's a, there's a power in that. There's a tremendous opportunity, and I am, I am sensitive to the nature of discussing the interview questions in the forum as presented, but I worry that we lose the forest for the trees when the overall goal of this motion, and my understanding of the Community Diversity Engagement Resolution, is to really bring in as wide a talent pool as humanly possible into city affairs, or to simply just enhance the engagement of residents wherever it is that we can find them. And I do think that with cooperation with staff pertaining to this measure, that will be, that will be the mission statement carried forward to an eventual resolution that does come before us on council. And I think that that work is important, and I appreciate, I appreciate the thought and the care that CDEC is taking into this, because I do think that it's concurrent with the overall mission of the group, to the best of the aims that CDEC was set up for, which is to look over the city and see which stones we have not looked under, to frankly create a more cohesive Kaiser. And I, that's something I personally want, and I'm in, I'm in favor of decisions that can bring that about. I'm optimistic with how CDEC is going to work with staff on this, and I'd love to see what comes out of that discussion and the resolution that may be put forward here.
We brought forward, we had good conversations. We've had quite a few turnovers, so that's also, it's a need phase. We're going to have two open positions. I worry that we may not get quorum at times, and so I'm just, I think at times, we've been accused of being a committee that didn't get work done, and I'm trying to change their reputation, so we're getting work done. That's why we're bringing it here, is we have a need. We're going to have some openings. We would like to change the process. Now, if we need to have a work session and coordinate with the other committees, that's fine, we're just not trying to stop work, because we know the need is there. And so was that conversation of, we have the need, should we bring it, or should we wait, and then kind of follow what's established, but really keep coming back to the well, so.
And so, just for a point of clarification, the proposal before us tonight is simply to change the appointment process. It's not to adopt questions, or even to recommend that we move forward with a question base for the volunteer coordinating committee. That's, that's in the recommendations as a follow-on to this change, but that is something that we could do through a work session or some other means to be determined. So, but the resolution specifically tonight is on the change of appointment.
There's no resolution.
It's right here, it's the change to Attachment A.
No, the motion is to prepare.
Okay, so, oh, that's right, this was discussion four. So the recommendation at the top is for the change, and then you see the red line version as, as proposed, is in the Attachment A, that it would change to volunteer coordinating. That is the only change that, in the Attachment A at this time. If we want to make recommendation in our discussion, once the motion is on the table, then we can do so at that time. Anything else for Ms. Rodek or Ms. Kuns? Councillor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, hi. This has been a tough thing for me. I've had several members that I've appointed to this particular committee, who went into the work pretty excited, and then became very disillusioned very quick. And so I'm looking to be on my fourth appointment here pretty quick, and that's frustrating to me, because I know the people that, that I appointed were great people, that really understood some of the challenges of a diverse community. And I'm worried that we actually can show some things that we're doing that make a difference, and that's, one of them specifically said to me, I just don't, I just feel like I'm wasting my time being on this committee. That's real concerning. And when we put this committee together, the whole idea was to figure out how we could reach out to different segments of our community, so that we can bring our community together. And there were some people that were on the committee early on, that was like, oh, well, we have to turn this into a DEI committee, which that was never the intent. So I'm, you know, I'm just concerned. I like being able to, to know that I'm appointing people to the committee that, that have the right motive to bring Kaiser together, and not divide it further. And that's, that's why I really like being able to appoint someone, rather than just have the VCC do that. So anyway, that's my opinion.
Well, we're getting really, pretty much into deliberation. Does anybody have any more questions for the members of the committee, before we dismiss them and put a motion on the table for deliberation? Thank you both very much. Councillor President Starr, would you put a motion on the table for deliberation?
I move that the Kaiser City Council directs staff to prepare a resolution to change the CDEC, Community Diversity Engagement Committee member appointment process, so that it is completed by the volunteer coordinating committee, rather than by direct councillor appointment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council directs staff to prepare a resolution to change the CDEC, Community Diversity Engagement Committee member appointment process, so that it is completed by the volunteer coordinating committee, the VCC, rather than by direct councillor appointment. So I know we've ventured into deliberation already, but let's go ahead and continue the conversation. And we can also have the conversation about if we want to include in this direction, to include the development of questions, or if we want to have that be a separate action at a separate time. So with that, I will start at the end with councillor Cross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to reiterate what I just said. If we got all the chairs together there, and it's something that we wanted to do with all the committees, I feel strongly about that. I love what councillor Kohler said. I like being able to, even with the VCC, being able to appoint that person. And again, that's why I will be voting no.
Okay. Councillor Duran.
So I too would like to echo what councillor Kohler said. I, I have, I've had two people on this committee, and the first one, I felt was a great asset to the committee, and he would not have stayed on that committee as long as he did if we hadn't had a relationship. And, because I had to keep after him to, you know, encourage him to stay on, and the only reason he did leave is he moved out of Kaiser. So, and my second one, I believe she's a great asset to the, to the team also, and having the relationship, I think, has been the key to, you know, my appointments staying as long as they have. So I honestly think having that relationship is a key to the, to what we've got going on.
Thank you. Councillor President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, there, for some, I just have this, I don't want to stop forward work that the committee is doing, and I think it's, I think when I hear, you know, councillor Kohler talk about people, what did you say, six people quitting?
Four people. I've had three people, three appointments.
Three appointments. You know, to me, I want to ask, kind of dig into why that's happening. And I also think that there's some wisdom in the work session and ensuring that we're, and I hear what councillor Reed said about it being a pilot. I just, if it, I don't know how you can, I would just like to see consistency with the questions, and I think hearing from the CDC in a work session about the kind of questions, that could lend itself really nicely to the other committees to do the same work, and have some consistency in the, in the questions and understanding the work. So yes, I want the work session, and I don't want to stop forward work. So I just said a whole lot of nothing in that comment, but I hear, having heard the conversations, I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, but I, over time, have heard the conversations about, within the committee, about moving this over to the VCC. And I really applaud Chair Rodek and her, and the committee as a whole in moving this forward. I think there's wisdom in consistency across all the committees, and having all the committees have the conversation at the same time in a work session.
Councillor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I, I look at the committee, and I think there was one member of the committee that had been there since we first started. It's been, what, three years? It's been three years the committee was put together? And there's one.
There's been.
Okay, citizens at large. Navea was the one that was appointed by a councillor, that was the only one that was still there. Yeah, I, I think that the. Yeah, I would, I would just like to have some say on who's there representing me there.
Councillor Housman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did not actually know my CDEC appointee all that well before I made the appointment. I owe councillor Cross a great deal of credit for being the first person to introduce me to them. But I got to know them. I did, I did my best to understand where they were coming from, and understand what motivated the work they were doing, and why they wanted to join the CDEC, and also how they felt about the City of Kaiser, and how they felt they could frankly make the city a better place, because that's what we're all here to do functionally. I'm very glad I appointed them. I'm super proud of them and the work that they've done, and I absolutely feel like they're making the city a better place. I didn't necessarily know my VCC appointee all that well, my current VCC appointee, before I nominated them. I took some time, got to know them, wanted to understand their motivations, understand what it is that they wanted to get out of the experience of the VCC, and how they wanted to make the City of Kaiser a better place. I'm very proud of them, too. I think they've served admirably, and I've heard many positive comments with respect to their service on the VCC. I didn't necessarily know either of my appointees that well, but for me, it was an exercise in faith and trust. I wanted to bring some good people into the fold of the city whom I didn't necessarily know very well, but I wanted to be able to empower them and trust them, and be able to help them put some of their best work, and in my seat as a council, be able to say, okay, if you need me, I'm here. Feel free to come to me, I will do my best to understand, explain. If you need coaching, I can coach. If you want a sounding board, I can be a sounding board. Whatever service I may be to you, that's what I want to be. I'm, I'm personally, obviously, over the moon with the results of my appointees. I think they've both done an outstanding job. That having been said, given what it is that the CDEC is trying to accomplish within this framework, there is a considerable amount of trust at play. That's what is going to underpin this process, is that council appoints VCC members who take the ownership in it, who then appoint CDEC members, who are willing to go around, put their stamp on the city, look through work with an equity lens, and in some cases, even be a little bit of a check on power, as we award power or take away power to the various city committees. I see that definitely as an evolution of the work that the CDEC has done over time, but also as a very positive move, and a very encouraging move as to the direction of the city. I consider the testimony here, and I think that there are a lot of positive elements that have come out of this, and I am, I'm excited to see the work being carried forward. I think this is a good first step, and I think that that element of trust with respect to the VCC, our appointees can handle it, in all cases.
Thank you. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a couple thoughts. First of all, you know, since the inception of the council, and I'm thinking Carrie Brown might have been there from the beginning as well. No? Okay. Well, regardless, for the most part, turnover, you know, councillor Duran's appointee, my first appointee, left because they moved out of the city. But a lot of these appointees that have been in and out so quickly, have never been to more than two meetings. And the attendance records, I think, would bear that out. Some of them never went to more than maybe one meeting. So, you know, the attendance at the meetings hasn't, haven't been enough to even have given it a chance as a committee. And I think now, the committee is comprised of people that, that are committed and that are working well together, and again, with Ms. Rodek's leadership, she's doing a fantastic job, and we are getting things done. And I think with this, this whole idea was born out of a movement towards consistency. So consistency in appointment, in the appointment process, and then sort of the other piece is the consistency in the way the VCC treats different committees, and that's kind of, for me, the next step. But this, again, comes out of a need for consistency. So the motion on the table is about moving it from an appointment process to the VCC process, and that is about consistency. process and that is about consistency. And then I think another piece of this, moving it to the volunteer coordinating committee is it, it ceases to be somebody representing us through the appointment process and instead somebody representing the city, which I think is another reason that I, I support this motion is because we're, we're moving away from supporting individual counselors to instead supporting the city and the various voices that are represented in the city.
Just to wrap up, my point of view is I would agree that this is actually going to increase consistency because every other committee is appointed through the volunteer coordinating committee process. And I would concur that it is important to be consistent. When we were first establishing this committee, it made sense at the time for that startup. And yes, I was very blessed to be able to appoint Navea Music, who has been there for the full three years and done an outstanding job as our youth voting member. And I'm happy for her with graduation and moving on to new things, but sad to be losing her voice and in that particular space. I'm hoping that she will help with recruiting her successor. That said, I think that the idea of working in a work session with the committees on developing questions makes a lot of sense. The conversation I heard at the volunteer coordinating committee about this notion of having a few baseline questions regarding, you know, specific to each committee is beginning to make a lot of sense. It will give some guidance to the committee. It would help guide them also in what questions should, could, as well as should not be asked of applicants in a spirit of fairness and equity. And that would be a separate action, in my opinion. I think the question being asked this time is being moved, moving this, the appointment itself from the council individual appointments to the volunteer coordinating committee. I think it is time to go ahead and make that change, so I'll be voting in favor of that. Anything further? Council President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if, if this is referred to staff to come up with the resolution, what, I think, I'm, what I want to know before I vote is what happens to our current appointees? Or does it, are we, like, I really like my appointee, Tammy Kuns, and think she does a great job. If this moves forward to a resolution, what happens? Does she then have to move over to apply? Like, what's the timing on that? And I think that's where I would, before we just make a blanket motion to move it over to the VCC, what happens to the current appointees?
I think that we have that opportunity to direct staff in that regard, how we are conducting the deliberation here. I appreciate that question. We have people who are in particular rotations because our position numbers and they have expiration dates. So I would add that with concurrence of the group, or we could make it as a friendly amendment, that the current rotation remain in place and that vacancies, as they occur, either through resignation or by expiration, be filled by the VCC. So that would be my recommendation for addressing that. And I'd be happy to make that as a friendly amendment. I, I, I need to get a response before I move on.
Oh, sorry. I'm thinking. I was, I'm processing.
Okay, that's fine. And then I'll come to you.
You stole my idea, so.
Okay.
So you're waiting for, yes, I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, so the motion stands amended to have the appointment stay as is and be filled by the VCC upon resignation or expiration. Okay. Anything further? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, signify by saying no.
No.
Nos, raise hands, please. Nos are Cross, Kohler, and Duran. Motion passes four-three. Not my favorite number, but we'll be able to, again, deliberate once the resolution comes to city council for further work. I want to thank Chair Rodek and a member of the committee, Tammy Kuns, for being here as well and helping with this work and the conversation. That concludes administrative action. We have nothing on the consent calendar tonight, so Council President Starr does not have a long list to read. Other business, this time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Brown, does staff have anything to add this evening?
We do not have any additional business, Madam Mayor.
All right, council members, anybody have other business to bring up at this time? Seeing none, let's go to then to staff updates. Mr. Brown.
I'd like to give a shout out to the public about the Summer Concert Series sponsored by Uptown Music, the Chamber of Commerce, and Valor Mentoring. July 20th will be the first concert. It'll be rhythm and business. There'll be concerts every week through August 31st, two of those weeks, which will be Kaiser Fest. So I know people are excited about that and the Chamber, Valor Mentoring, and Uptown Music are doing a great job putting it together.
All right, thank you very much. Very much looking forward to that indeed. Mr. Wood.
Nothing additional, thank you.
All right, Ms. Bissett.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city councilors. We have a little bit of a break in the summer action. We're doing a bunch of hiring, so we're down some bodies, but we're staying active in the community, trying to anyways. A cool event that we're teaming up with Elks, and I don't know all the details yet, Sergeant DeMarco's putting it together, will be July 27th. And it's kind of a community awareness and a drug takeback event at the same time. So be looking for that, to be hitting our Facebook page. National Night Out is a big one that we're going to ramp up. And we're hoping to get the logo on the police homepage this week for National Night Out, so registrations can begin. And then if you have questions about that, Lieutenant Heine, this will be his first crash course on National Night Out and planning it. So I may be helping him quite a bit on that. And then you met Sergeant Quintero about three months ago when he got promoted to sergeant, and he's been doing a really good job of doing community outreach. And he's planning another one for the summer in Plaza Maravella. It's south end of town. It's the market down there. We did an outside kind of donuts with a cop type thing before. Anyways, it turned out really good. We're going to do that again. And then tomorrow with the Public Works Day, I didn't know that was a, a new holiday, but I do like it that it is. It's great. We unfortunately are going to be kind of hit and miss as to whether or not we can be there. We have a very robust, active shooter scenario countywide for, planned for tomorrow. So that's with Oregon State Police, Marion County, Salem Police, Route of Sprague High School, and doing a, kind of a live action scenario, active shooter response. We have a ton of people and resources deployed out there and then some other stuff going on tomorrow. So we're going to try and get there, but you may not see us very often. And to answer the question about what Chief Blanco brought up about car seat clinics, we have two folks that joined the fire department on that. So Officer Miranda and Officer Starnes are, took the 40-hour course and are car seat certified. And so they've been joining the fire department in all these clinics to get those out and about. I want to, I have two brags. I want to brag about the police department. You get the weekly update and you get to see really cool police work that happens, you know, kind of written down. Today, we had a theft from Target called in by the loss prevention officer, asset protection officer from Target, and gave vehicle description and two suspect description. And Officer Darst and Officer Fahy, Officer Darst was in the area, located the car getting onto the freeway, onto northbound I-5. And Officer Fahy was also in the area at the same time, and he jumped on the freeway ahead of time, was able to set up at the end of the on-ramp, or yeah, the on-ramp ahead of time, put out spike strips, and we were ready to stop the car if we need, well, he was ready to deploy him. Ended up, because he was there, car behind, we pulled him over, took him into custody. It was just like, when you think about beautiful police work and, and people going to jail that need to go to jail that are affecting our community, it was absolutely beautiful. And of course, these are not first-time offenders. They were from out of, out of the city. And, and they had warrants and they ended up, the right people were held accountable today in Kaiser. So it was a beaut, listening to it on the radio was like beautiful orchestra, you know, whatever. It was awesome. And then one other story about Cota. And, and I know that Cota had a lot of attention for a while and we're still in training with J-Lad with the dog. But last week, J-Lad is coming to the police department to do training to become a certified comfort canine, brought a teenager that was, had been through some trauma. And walking through the door, this was what the dog is trained to do, is to break down the barriers between, you know, the dog, law enforcement, and people affected in trauma. The individual came in, kind of hands crossed, kind of apprehensive, and the dog walked up to, did its job, and walked up to this individual, was not afraid of dogs, just kind of apprehensive, and put the head between the hands, got the hands separated. And then the dog, the person, the trauma individual was able to pet the dog and break down those barriers and was able to have a conversation. And you could just see the whole room. Lieutenant Nelson described the room as just completely relaxed. And so the training is working. We're getting there. We're not 100% there, but it's, it's awesome. And we're able to share these conversations with other law enforcement agencies. So they're looking to do the same thing and share the information, even with the boxer rescue, as he uses a boxer as a comfort canine as well. So anyways, it's working and it's great.
Fantastic. Oh, love those, love those success stories. Thank you so much. Mr. Lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. The Splash Fountain is open for business Tuesdays through Sundays when the forecasted temperature is 75 degrees and above. Looks like this week, that's after tomorrow. So come, go out and enjoy with your kids or kids by themselves, just go have fun. And then one more last plug, Public Works Day tomorrow, Kaiser Rapids Park, 10 to 2, come out, have a good time, grab something to eat, interact with all the Public Works staff and all the other community partners that'll be out there with us.
Don't forget Trash Your Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, and then Trash Your Tuesday after that, tomorrow.
Doubleheader tomorrow.
Doubleheader.
Yeah. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question for Chief Copeland. Neighborhood Night Out, you talked a little bit about registering for that. I've had a couple of people contact me and say they've been on the website trying to do that, but it says 404, nothing found, or no form, or whatever. Talk to me about how that's going to work, or is that in process, or?
I sent the email right before the city council meeting to actually Executive Assistant Blaylock, who will put that on there hopefully tomorrow. So it'll be a nice logo on the police homepage, as in years past, and you'll just click on that, take it right to the registration form, be simple, fill it out, and we'll get, show up.
Thank you very much. Ms. Witham.
Just a, just a couple of things. Had a, had a meeting just last week with consultant team and the state. We're going to get some consultant support to do some code updates. One of those, one of those things that we have to do around the CFAC rules. So just kind of had a, just an initial meet and greet with them. More to come on that, but it's always nice when mandates come with actual funding and support attached. So that was, that's helpful. And then the other thing, just kind of in the, in the back of the mind, I know I've shared this before, you know, TSP update, I have a second meeting with the ODOT folks this week. So we're kind of moving toward that, still on track to hopefully actually kick off work to begin in early 2025. So just wanted to kind of give you those couple, couple things, so.
That is really good news. We'll keep on positive thoughts toward that. Mr. Lindsey.
I could report that we, our sergeants actually were certified by ERB to be a new collective bargaining unit. And so we will be, we, we got notice that they want to start officially negotiating. So that's a period that's important for you guys. I will be writing you as well about this, just so we know. We have to, importantly, we have to remain neutral about all collective efforts on the part of a collective bargaining unit, so. But more to come, and that'll probably be about a five to six month process, so. But I will, I will be in touch with you. But I think, you know, it's a good thing that we're getting off to a, a good start and we're going to come up with some ground rules and we're going to start negotiating, so.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. That takes us then to council member reports, and I'll start with Counselor Cross. Just keep on going.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will run through that. Just, those were beautiful stories. I just wanted to say beautiful as much as you did, Chief Copeland, but those were great. And Neighborhood Night Out, I did tell Tammy this, Marion County sheriffs on their Facebook page, you can also sign up for them to come to your Neighborhood Night Out party. And they just put a link on. And I'll send that to you, Melissa, tomorrow if you want to get it out to the neighborhood associations or put on the city of Kaiser website, but throwing that out there, too. I make music days also this week on Friday in Salem. That's always fun and they have different places that live music will be. Last few weeks, did the Sedcor Golf Tournament, Marion County Canine Golf Tournament. I got to Salem Leadership Foundation, the Fancy Friday Luncheon, and that was nice to see Sam Skillard get a nice send-off. Latino Business Alliance Pandolce, and Oregon Restaurant Lodging Association, One Big Night Dinner and Auction, which is a great organization, which all they do for the state of Oregon for the hotels and the restaurants. They are a wealth of knowledge. And yeah, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Counselor Duran.
Towards the end of the month, things get a little bit slower, so it's nice, but I don't have a whole lot going on this week. Last week, I did the chamber framework meeting with Mayor Clark and Counselor Cross and City Manager Brown. And then on Tuesday, I had my last chamber board of directors meeting. I will no longer be doing those. And then also on that day, I took a tour of the Salem PD building, which they don't do very often. And that was kind of a great, you know, neat to see that building being, them using it. And I didn't realize, but it's four times larger than the space they had before. And they used that building for 40 years the way it was, and when they moved in, it was not big enough. So they are, they are very, they have quite a bit of room to grow and, and they're going to do that. So that was a neat, neat thing. That was a two and a half hour tour, but because that building's so large. But that, that's what I have.
Thank you. It's nice to know what our partners in law enforcement have and the resources that really help keep both our committee, communities safe. So thank you. Council President Starr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. June 4th, attended the community cafe here and would just encourage members of the community to attend the next one, which I know Tammy will keep us updated on when that next one is. I think she's already, her and our team are already planning the next one. Also had the VCC meeting last Thursday and then the library, Kaiser Community Library Board Meeting. Would just encourage people, if you are wanting to attend the Wednesday afternoon activity events, those are ticketed events through the library. They have committed and affirmed that they will inventory the reptiles and insects and squiggly things. And know that those tickets are available two weeks before each event. And probably the biggest and most popular event will be the Princess Storytime Event, and those tickets are available on the 26th. And they are very appreciative, just fellow counselors, they are very appreciative of the giving, the ability to use the space here because those events continue to grow week after week with kids coming in, so.
Thank you very much. Any of the reptiles they find leftover, I'll take them. Counselor Kohler.
I stole my thunder. I was just going to say I thought the reptile was the largest event, but because of their size. Anyway. So I got to go to the end of year elementary and middle school orchestra concerts this last week. That was a lot of fun to see all the little kiddos learning how to use their instruments and see their progress for the year. I actually got to go to McNary Graduation and, and see Counselor Reed read a whole bunch of names. A lot of work that goes into all of that, and congratulations to all the graduates. A lot of work that goes into all of that, and congratulations to all the graduates. And the graduates, too. So attended Kaiser United, had an excellent presentation on fraud prevention and such, and it was Meredith Mooney's last meeting as president. We had a neat little send-away thing for her. Of course, the procurement discussion and agenda conference, the Parks Board meeting. We also talked a little bit about the shade sales being up at the big toy. So that's another little thing. Claggett Creek Watershed Council, we reviewed Sagy Day in the Park. And then July and August meeting will be canceled. The next meeting will be September 12th. We're always looking for people that are interested in being involved in the Claggett Creek Watershed Council. Attended the Salem Leadership Foundation Luncheon. And encourage people to go to the Public Works Day tomorrow. The last year's was a lot of fun, and should be a lot of fun. A little plug, I have, my son is having two different performances at the Make Music this Friday, so if you want to see what he's all about, you could do that, too. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much. Counselor Husband.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd encourage everyone to spare a thought as well for McNary graduate Spencer Tehadis. Spencer is currently working in the city of Gresham for their fire department. He was last month critically injured, unfortunately, in a fire at a duplex that he was working to put out. My understanding is he's still in a tough medical condition, but is incrementally improving. Spencer's a little younger than I am. He's my brother's age, but always a great, great kid growing up. I love his family. His sister Amy was in my grade, his younger sister Hope. Their parents, just wonderful folks, and so to Spencer, his wife, and the whole Tehadis family, definitely have been thinking of you guys and hope that Spencer pulls through and is able to recover. That's a, that's a very hard thing, and I, he, I just hope he will pull through stronger with, with all the experience. He clearly has been serving his community very well now in Gresham, so. It was, it was sad to read, but hoping for the continued recovery. Kind of exciting sports notes, the Salem Kaiser Beacon's annual banquet was, I believe, this past week, and McNary High was all over the honorees list. This, this is kind of awesome. So the head honoree for McNary was longtime former boys' basketball coach Larry Gar. Gosh, I remember going to see games in elementary school with him on the sideline. So exciting to see that. McNary's finest, Jim Litchfield, presenting, naturally, as, as one does. Good to see Lich. Longtime Kaiser resident Mike Allegrey also was nominated, also received a Beacon Award. Mike's been a longtime broadcaster for radio events for Salem Kaiser schools. He's, he's someone who lived close to my house, so I've gotten to know Mike personally over the years. He's all, he's always been great to me and just a great person to have and to know in the community. I'm very excited for Mike and his family. Bunch of McNary kids generally getting some athlete of the year nominees in lieu of having a youth counselor. I get to do this for some fun. For the, for the fall sports, boys' and girls' soccer both get a nominee. Jonathan Ruiz for the boys and Maya Alston for the girls. Very cool, great seasons for the both of them. Winter was a big season for McNary generally, and Steven Adams was nominated for boys' basketball, Avery Buss for girls, and the GOAT, Ally Martinez for girls wrestling. We may just have to have like an Ally Martinez Day proclamation or something. She's seriously one of the best athletes I think that's ever come through McNary High School, so it's very cool to see her continue to ring up the accolades. And then a big shout out to Elijah Clendenning as well for boys' golf. McNary's one spring nominee, just yet another wonderful capper. Great, great to be able to celebrate some folks for their accomplishments throughout the year. And on a personal note, it's just great to see you all. Thank you all so much. I've needed a lot of help in general, but also as I continue to ramp up here with my council duties. So thank you for bearing with me, and it's been a great meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with all the talk of graduation, I wanted to acknowledge a couple of staff graduates who are retiring after a long time service to McNary and the Kaiser community in general. Dan Borisin is retiring after 35 years at McNary. Most of them as teacher, the last, I think, five or six as administrator. And he has just influenced so many kids for good, and he is, he will definitely be missed. And the other is Jeff Ovenin, who also a longtime science teacher at McNary. I want to say 30 years, but I am not entirely sure on that number. Also coached football at McNary for many years, so.
Softball, too.
Yep, and softball. And Dan Borisin was also a coach of volleyball and many other things as well. So just, just great service to McNary and great service to our community. So just wanted to send them with our best wishes as they move on to the next level. So great things happening with graduation. Also, the, I attended the City Dance Theater's June concert, and that was amazingly orchestrated, executed, just, just a brilliant, brilliant concert with so many participants, many from our Kaiser community. It was, they sold out both the noon and the 4 o'clock performance, and it was quite spectacular. And our own Matt Lawyer was dancing up there with Bailey. He had his own little dance number there, so it was pretty amazing. Had the Kaiser Heritage Foundation last Tuesday. Just really impressed with the stewardship that they have been able to execute over the Cultural Center, using the funds that the city has given them extraordinarily well, and just, just really good work. And speaking of which, Kaiser Homegrown Theater opened Lifespan of Fact last, last week, and it goes for two more weekends, this week and the next. Just a really, really interesting show in terms of the philosophy behind it and just our, our modern world and what we consider a fact. So really interesting. And that is about all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Just wrap up a couple of things going on. I did want to acknowledge and extend condolences from the city and our community to the friends and family of Scott Kaiser, who passed away, he was way too young. One of the founders of Kajue Sports Association, a longtime volunteer with Kajue Sports, so definitely reaching out to the family and friends, and he will be missed. Did want to let you all know that the League of Oregon Cities Policy Committees are wrapping up, and we will be receiving the list of all of the recommendations from the policy committees. I chair the Community and Economic Development Policy Committee. There's some really good recommendations coming forward for us to keep in mind to partly play offense and partly play defense on cost to cities as we get into the next legislative session, making sure that whatever comes through, like Mr. Witham said, is good to get. If we're going to have a mandate, at least for the state to pay for it, not try to put it on our backs, because that's not okay. And we're going to keep on pushing for cities to not bear the burden of state policies. The Memorial Area Commission on Transportation met on the 6th, and we are moving forward with Connect Oregon. And because the chair will be on vacation, I will be representing our three-county area when we're looking at projects to recommend to move forward. There's a rail project from Marion County that's on the list that will be very helpful for our agricultural community. So I'll be looking into that one and see if we can get that one funded through Connect Oregon. On this last Saturday, I just wanted to point out, I did the monthly, what's called Coffee with Kathy. It's a Zoom meeting that gets broadcast with other agencies, Fire District. This time, we had a representative to the school district. Chrissy Hudson was on there, Betty Hart from the Fire District. And she also talks about the library, and we also had Diane Watson from Chomekada. But we also invited Angela Plowhead, who is on the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District. A lot of work with our watershed councils, but a lot of us don't know that that's actually a taxing district. When you get your property tax bill, that's on there. So they had their beautiful annual report recently, and we got to learn about what this local government is doing for our environment, both in the city and for agriculture around our community. A lot of us love that native plant sale that they have every year, but they do so much more. So it was a really neat opportunity to learn about a local partner that is getting work done right here, and that we can get involved to take care of our own community. So that was fantastic. I also want to give a huge shout out to Thomas Morgan, who won the inaugural Oregon Civics Bee. He is from here in Kaiser, and he will represent Oregon at the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation's National Civics Bee in Washington, D.C. on Tuesday, November 12th. One of our, one of the other finalists was another Kaiserite, and that is Dylan Guptal. So congratulations to Thomas Morgan and Dylan Guptal for the National Civics Bee competition. Way to go. Wanted to let folks know also coming up, oh, one other thing I got to do was I got to celebrate the centennial of one of our residents. Ruthie Jackson turned 100 years old on Flag Day, Friday, the June 14th, and I was invited to join her family and friends at the Brookdale Care Center to celebrate her birthday. They had a band. I'll tell you, she is kicking it, and she is so much fun, and clearly beloved by the folks in the community and so many who came to celebrate with her. Thank you for inviting me to join in. We had met before, and it was just really fun to catch up. Coming up, just want to let folks know that this coming weekend is also going to be special. It's Cancer Awareness Weekend at Volcano Stadium. It also will coincide with, believe it or not, the 27th anniversary of the first game at Volcano Stadium is this Saturday. So come on out to the ball field for not only cancer awareness, but also to commemorate this milestone for volcanoes and baseball here in Kaiser. Thank you, former mayor Dennis Coho, for bringing baseball to Kaiser. So the last thing on my list will be on June 29th. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee did recommend that Tony Grove be granted, or be recognized as Volunteer of the Quarter, and I will be taking the clock and certificate to the Celebration of Life that will be held at the Elks on the 29th. I asked his daughter, Emery Cruz, for permission to do that, and she was very excited to have me come and make that presentation. Thank you to the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and people who sent in information to go in that recommendation, and I look forward to celebrating what Tony Grove did for our community and to share that with his family. That is all I have tonight. Thank you all for your work. That gets to agenda input. We will meet on Tuesday, the 25th, at 6:00 p.m. in executive session. Then on Monday, July 1st, 7:00 p.m. in regular session. Monday, July 8th, 6:00 p.m. in a work session for youth peer court. And on Monday, July 15th, at 7:00 p.m. in regular session. That is what I have for agenda input. Is there anything additional? All right, that concludes the agenda for this evening. The time is 9:26, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.